Good morning. I'd like to call to order the April 28, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Mobile County Commission. This morning, we were pleased to welcome Pastor David Smith from Oak Park Church to bring our invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This is Commissioner Dewitt's pastor.
Well, he told Dina he was my mother's pastor.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be glad to pray. I thought you said. I was hoping I remembered it. All right. Let's bow our heads for prayer. Dear Lord, we come before you today with grateful hearts. We're thankful, Lord, that you are with us today, even in this very room. Lord, you never leave us. You never forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home. So this morning, God, I give you thanks for these, your servants, Commissioner President Ludgood, Commissioner Hudson, and Commissioner Dewitt, of whom, Lord, you have chosen the path of service on behalf of us all. We gather together, carrying our burdens and our hopes, trusting that you, oh, God, can remove the burden and fulfill our hopes. Help us all, God, to trust you more beyond our fears and disappointments. And we pray this morning, Lord, that you'll be glorified by the decisions that are made by this commission. I ask you to grant wisdom, strength, and courage to do what's right for the citizens of Mobile County. Teach us all, Lord, to place the interest of others above our own and to recognize your presence among us. We give you thanks again for each of the commissioners who make Mobile County such a wonderful place to call home. And we ask that your will be done today, on earth as it is in heaven. And we pray and ask all of these things in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. This morning, the county commission will be recognizing Children's Mental Health Awareness Week.
Good morning, everyone. Very nice to see everybody here today. We have a number of special guests today who will be receiving resolutions in observance of Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. And I would like to ask these different agencies and individuals if you'll come up, please. And then the commission will join you on the lower seating level and present these resolutions. First of all, with the bridge, we have Ashley Simon. With the Mobile County Juvenile Court, we have Judge Naaman. We have Denise Reiner from the Mobile County Public School System. I think we have representatives from the Child Advocacy Center and also Executive Director Turks Flessinger with Alta Point. Okay? And also want to recognize Judge Hardesty, who's here also to lend support for the Middle Court, Health Court.
Good morning again, everyone. It is so nice to have you here today. And thank you. Thank you so much for the critically important work that you do in this community. It really makes a difference. This morning, we have a resolution in observance of Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in Mobile County, Alabama. It reads, "Whereas Children's Mental Health Awareness Week serves to raise awareness of the importance of children's mental health and the need for accessible, comprehensive, and effective mental health services." And whereas Children's Mental Health Awareness Week serves to raise awareness of the importance of children's mental health and the need for accessible, comprehensive. I think that we just read that one, Dina. That's a repeat of the original. Whereas reducing the stigma associated with mental health issues encourages open conversations, fostering a culture of understanding and support for children and families. And whereas the mental health and well-being of children are essential to their success in school and relationships and throughout life. And whereas early identification and intervention of children experiencing mental health challenges can lead to significantly improved outcomes in emotional, social, and academic development. And whereas fostering the mental health well-being of children is a shared responsibility among parents, caregivers, educators, healthcare providers, and the broader community to help all children reach their full potential. And whereas Children's Mental Health Awareness Week is an opportunity to highlight the importance of supporting children's mental health and ensuring access to comprehensive, compassionate, and effective mental health services. And now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission proclaims the week of May 4 through 10, 2025, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in Mobile County, Alabama. And it is signed by all three Mobile County Commissioners and our Administrator, Eddie Kerr. And we have a copy for each of you, although we may need to recirculate those when we make our correction. But anyway, I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you'd like to speak, like to say a few words.
I want to thank, you know, Alta Point, the commissioners first, for recognizing the importance of mental health. I guess really, nobody recognizes how important mental health is than those that deal with juveniles in the juvenile court system. I don't know where we would be without Alta Point. I don't know where we would be without the school system. And I am so grateful that you would recognize the importance, because it is important. Our families right now, our children are struggling, and we are so reliant on good mental health. And thank God we have it. So thank you, Commissioner.
I would just like to echo what Judge Naaman said. We have a great relationship with all of the providers in our region. Lifelines, Alta Point, the Catholic Social Services. Our interactions with the court system is fantastic. We're really taking care of a tremendous amount of children. And then, of course, our relationship with the school system here in Mobile County, where we're in almost every school in the county. So anyway, I just wanted to thank them and thank you all, the county commissioners, for recognizing us.
Thank you again. I echo the remarks of both Mrs. Flessinger and Judge Naaman. My 22 years on the bench, I came to realize after a while that we weren't turning a blind eye to mental health problems. We just weren't cognizant of it. We just weren't recognizing them for what they really are, the need to address people's mental health issues from birth on. And I'm so grateful to the commission for recognizing that and making steps to enhance this proclamation. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you so much, and I think we will be getting some pictures.
This morning, we're gonna move on to recognizing our retirees. I'm gonna call their names and see if they're here, but I want to. We have four employees who will be retiring May the 1st. They represent 119 years of service, 119 years and three months of service to the citizens of Mobile County. We have, I don't see Joe. Joe Slade Jr. You hear Joe? Maybe not. Joe worked in public buildings as supervisor 24 years and 10 months. Mark Fox, David Mark Fox. You here? Come on down here, Mark. I know, I call him Mark. David Mark Fox, but Mark and I worked together for many years at the sheriff's office. He worked in communications, 30 years and 11 months. Thank you, Mark. Cynthia Davis. I don't see Cynthia here today. I worked with Cynthia also at the sheriff's office. She worked over there as a secretary for 35 years and 10 months. And John Pelt. Are you here, John? Yes, sir. And John has 27 years and eight months as an equipment operator. And so we'd like to take this time to thank you guys and the other two that's not here today. And give each other ten. And we'll get the other resolutions out to Cynthia. But this one's Mark's, and then I'll get yours for you, Mr. Pelt. But they all say the same. What are you laughing at? Don't laugh at me, Dana. But it's the Mobile County Commission presents this certificate to David Mark Fox, and yours will have your name on it, and it says, "We wish to express sincere thanks for gratitude for 30 years and 11 months of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement." And it's signed by all three commissioners and the county administrator, Eddie Kerr. So thank you, sir. And John, yours says the same thing, except 27 years and eight months. So thank you for your service. And it's a lot of, it's a lot of years going out the door. We can't convince you to stay a couple more years, right? Thank you.
Do we have any speakers?
No one has signed up to speak this morning.
Thank you. All righty, Mr. Mitchell.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. We ask you to take action on the following items. Number one, approved list of claims.
Some moved.
Second.
Number two, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance report.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Hearing, no, the public hearing is now closed.
Number three, approve recommendation of the Mobile County Board of Health to add proposed fees as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Number four, approve alcohol application to transfer retail beer and table wine off premises only license from Ganesh Oil Company to LG Oil Company for County Market 12351 Old Pascagoula Road, Grand Bay.
Some moved.
Second.
Number five, approve appropriation contract with youth on winning side in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 Education Funds for its youth music workshop and scholarship program to be held July 21 through July 25.
Some moved.
Second.
Number six, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $9,200 from District 3 Education Funds to assist with the cost of paving the walkways at Catherine H. Hankins Middle School.
Some moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve appropriation contract with distinguished young women of Mobile County, Alabama, in the total amount of $3,000 for its college scholarship program to be held June 6 through June 7. Funds to be divided as follows. Sorry.
Sorry. Some moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Dolphin Island Sea Lab Foundation in the amount of $5,000 from District 3 Education Funds for its marine science education fundraiser, cocktails with the critters, to be held May 1st.
Some moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve Amendment 1 to the contract with Content Fresh, approved in the September 23, 2024 minutes. Agenda item number 26, to add task number four, Mobile County Community Calendar for compensation in the amount of up to $2,500 per month.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve master services agreement with Modern Cyber for maintenance and consulting support of existing system security needs pending legal review.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve agreement for statement of work with Modern Cyber to provide managed services to support Mobile County Commission's ongoing security needs in the amount of $102,000 for a one-year term, pending legal review.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 12, workday tenants migration to the public cloud at no cost to the county and authorize the county administrator to sign and execute all necessary documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve advertising contract with Business Alabama Magazine in the amount of $2,887 for a one-page, full-color ad in its June 25 issue, June 25 issue, and spotlights Mobile County, pending legal review.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management to allow installation of communication infrastructure at the building inspections offices and authorize the commission president to sign all necessary documents at no cost to the county.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve appropriation contract with court-appointed special advocates in the amount of $25,000 for program expenses related to the volunteer program, subject to the submission of appropriation packet and subsequent legal review.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve contract with Krebs Engineering to provide professional engineering services for Project Bylby Battery North Sewer Improvements and authorize the commission president to sign all associated documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve contract amendment number 11 with the Mobile County Park Initiative contract with Watermark Design Group to add additional services for John Archer Arena.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 18, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project John Archer Arena.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve agreement with Clover Connect to provide payment transaction services related to Rec Desk and authorize the commission president to sign all associated documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve termination of contract with McAnally Land Design to provide planning and designing services for Project Mobile County Blue Way Trail Development.
Some moved.
Second. Why, why are we canceling the, is there a problem? Are we gonna rebid?
We are consulting with the granting agency to confirm any procurement requirements for a new contract.
Thank you.
Number 21, award bid to Harris Contracting Services for Project Lewis Landing for their low bid in the total amount of $811,578 and authorize the execution of contract documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve change order number two with Jay Hunt Enterprises for Project Chickasabob Park Campground Improvements. The change order will increase the contract by $955, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $3,545,619.90. And the contract time will also be increased by 76 days. The date of substantial completion is May 25, 2025.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 23 was voted at conference. Number 24, approve change order number two with Mid-America Golf and Landscape for Project Mobile County Golf Course, Project Golf Course Phase. The change order will increase the contract by $94,778, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $14,231,020.67, with no increase to the contract time.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 25, authorize update to Mobile County Park rates effective May 1, 2025.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 26, approve Second Amendment to the appropriation contract with the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History Mobile County Branch to extend the contract reporting deadline from March 31, 2025 until September 30, 2025.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 27, approve Amending 2024 Capital Improvement Plan to create project purchase of real property located at 9450 Moffett Road Sims for the use as a county garage and maintenance facility. The estimated budget for this project is $2.5 million. This amendment creates a new project purchase of real property located at 9450 Moffett Road Sims and allocates $2.5 million to, for the estimated budget from the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Some moved.
Second.
In commissioners, we are scheduled, if all goes well, to close on that tomorrow.
Ricky, is this the purchase price of the property, or does that include renovate, the renovations that have to take place?
This is the purchase price.
Okay.
Purchase price on them.
What is, what is the estimated cost of renovations?
We don't have that exactly yet. We know we gotta tie it to the sewer there. And then we gotta build in restrooms in the, out in the garage area, and we gotta build some offices on top. I mean, I'm assuming somewhere in the 200, that'd be an estimate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 28, adopt resolution revising the Mobile County Commission Conference and meeting schedule as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 29, approve appropriation contract with groundwork Mobile County in the amount of $35,000 for program operation expenses.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 30, consider taking the following action on bids.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 31, approve service order agreement with Unity Fiber to create a new fiber buildout in the amount of $206,500 under the current state of Alabama contract for 100 megabits per second Ethernet for Chickasabob Park to Mobile County Commission wide-area network and to provide managed Ethernet connection in the amount of $585 for 36 months.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 32, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Identifix in the amount of $1,428 for onsite license. Oh, sorry, one-site license.
For the period ending through July 2026?
Uh, yes, ma'am, sorry. And that's, yes.
For the county garage?
Yes, ma'am.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 33, renewal, approved renewal service agreement with BB's Pest and Termite Control in the amount of $375 for animal shelter.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 34, approve 36-month lease with Sharp Electronics Corporation for six Sharp copiers in the amount of $2,400, sorry, $245.12 per unit per month for the county administration.
Some moved.
Did you, were you able to get at me a?
Yes, I did.
I'm still just curious. I know, I know I've been told, but I was just curious.
Yes, I did, Commissioner. I sent that to you this morning. I apologize for the delay. So basically, the cost of the copiers would be $40,931. The copiers are used by IT Finance and Records. Because of the volume of the copy, the volume and the amount of copies, leasing the copiers is more cost-effective than buying them outright. If purchased, we would be responsible for purchasing toner at approximately $200 apiece and paying for each service call. Finally, at the end of the lease term, the county has the option of obtaining new replacement copiers, which will allow us to take advantage of latest technology. So it is overall more, going to be more cost-effective to lease than to purchase based on the volume of copies alone, considering records use of the copy machine.
Thank you for looking into that. I just wanted to know, really, so. Thank you. The total, the, the purchase cost is $40,000. How much?
Outright, it was $40,931.40 is the purchase price. And so this is over a three-year term. We'd be paying for toner. They come and service the copiers based on the volume. Every quarter, we'd be paying that at an hourly rate. And, um, let's see, yeah, based on the volume is the main thing.
Thank you. Second.
Number 35, approve correction to the Mobile County Commission, February 10, 2025 minutes, agenda item number 23, to change the cost of the subscription agreement with timekeeping systems from $365 to $395 for James T. Strickland Youth Center.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 36, approve correction to the Mobile County Commission, April 14, 2025 minutes, agenda item number 51, to change the cost of software support with SHI International from $4,132.73 to $3,774.39 for the county commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Number 37, approve project development agreement between Mobile County Commission and Porchlight, whereby Porchlight will acquire the real property located at 503 and 505 Conquer Street, and the county will convey to Porchlight real property located at 501 and 507 Conquer Street. Porchlight will improve the properties, including renovation to the historic Ace Theater. Once the renovations are complete, the county will lease the theater from Porchlight for use as a community theater, cultural arts, and event space for a term of 19 years and 11 months. Upon execution of the lease, the county will provide an incentive payment in the form of a $500,000 forgivable loan. The lease shall include a purchase option for the county, which may be exercised beginning in the year, in year six. And if exercised, Porchlight will sell the property to the county for an amount equal to the project debt plus exit fee. Upon closing of this bargain sale option, the county will forgive outstanding balance of loan and terminate subordinate mortgage pending final legal review. The 772 public notice was advertised in the line app on Wednesday, April 16, 2025.
Some moved.
What is, what is a, um, sell the property to the county for an amount equal to the project debt plus an exit fee? I know, um.
It relates to the historic tax credits that the developer is receiving for their share of the contribution to the property, to the development. And so they'll sell it to us at a discounted price after they receive their funding from the federal government.
That's the, that's the project debt fee. What is the exit fee?
They're, they're gonna charge some fee. We don't know that amount yet for their services to do this. Over and above the historic tax credit that they receive. Hence, that's why it's all final, subject to final legal view, because we're still receiving some of the documents as late as last night. So Preston Bolt and I will be working on that this week.
I mean, I think this is a wonderful project. I've just, um, I knew about the project.
I mean, I think this is a wonderful project. I've just, um, I knew about the project debt. I wasn't sure. I guess I missed that exit fee, if you don't mind.
When I get that number, we'll share it with all three of you before we quote sign off.
Should this state, requested by the county attorney and subject to final legal review?
It, it says that, Commissioner.
Does it?
Right above the 770.
Oh, I see that. Okay. Good balance. Yeah. Okay.
I will represent each of three. We'll share those numbers with you in final form before it's signed off.
Okay. I second the motion.
But, but the bottom line is this is just to allow the developer the opportunity to take advantage of those federal tax credits. It's why it seems so convoluted, right?
It is convoluted, but that's exactly why it is. And, and so they're helping us, but the funding is, their profit is tax credit plus whatever fee they charge.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I second the motion. I think I already did.
Number 38, approve revising Mobile County Commission, April 14th, 2025 minutes, Agenda Items Number 33, Number 34, and Number 35, to change nominal rent provision to $1 annual rent provision, subject to county review at the end of the first year and for any renewal periods.
So moved.
That's in reference to the nonprofit rentals at Bay Hayes, is that correct? Is that what item number?
It is.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Number 39, approve preliminary and final plat of Saranthus Estates and preliminary and final plat of Mobile Oaks Industrial Subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Barlow Road and Havens Road Gray Drain Basin pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 41, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements in the total amount of $575 for Project Bass Drive, Brim Drive, and Stripe Drive Gray Drain Basin pave as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number 42, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 3 on Natchez Trace Road in the amount of $7,000 for Project Natchez Trace Road Gray Drain Basin pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 43, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Number 3 on Natchez Trace Road in the amount of $470 for Project Natchez Trace Road Gray Drain Basin pave.
So moved.
Second.
Number 44, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from property owners for projects as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number 45, commission announcements and/or comments.
Yes. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say what a, what a wonderful day we had on Saturday out at Chickasabog Park for Earth Day, which was a collaborative effort between the county and Keep Mobile Beautiful and Love Your Community. It was well-attended. I think we had something like maybe 3,000 people overall that came. A lot of vendors participated and good music. We also had a number of award winners for Love Your Community grants for beautification projects throughout the community. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in making that possible. It's such a beautiful park, and, and I think that people are really gonna find a lot of enjoyment there. And I know that there's a next phase coming up, which will be at the waterfront. I think it's the sandbar to develop that. But, but between environmental services and communications and facilities and anybody else who was there and helped to, to make Saturday possible, thank you for your efforts. I think it was a great success, and congratulations.
I, um, I got to, I got to spend time at two beautiful parks in District One on Saturday. I actually made it last minute sideways coming into Earth Day, but I had a, a private event at River Delta, which is also another beautiful waterfront park in District One. And Tina and Matthew and Chance and their whole crew always do a fantastic job with our parks, and it looked great at both parks. But, um, so I just want to remind everyone, on May the 2nd, we'll start the Into Light exhibit being displayed in the atrium. I think it's a very moving exhibit, so it'll be open to anyone who wants to come down during our regular business hours and see that. So I'm pretty excited about having the opportunity to display that.
Shree, did you have anything to add?
I did. I just wanted to acknowledge that for County Government Month, it's been April. And what County Government, National County Government Month is, it's an annual celebration of county government. That's the National Association of Counties has been doing since 1991. And typically, we do several things in observance of National County Government Month. And this year, we did things by highlighting our workforce and encouraging volunteerism through county-sponsored events and highlighting the work of county employees on social media. We did some things with, to engage civic engagement, strengthening connections between government and residents. One of those is the Green Bag Lunch series where we have, we do educational programs and have music, and we, it allows us to teach people about what we, some of what we do to help the environment during April. And then we once again work to raise public awareness of programs and services provided to the community through social media activity. So we, we do a lot of facts and highlight services during the whole year. We do more of that during April. So that's just some of what we've, we've done this month.
Thank you. If nothing else, we'll adjourn.
We have an Indigent Care Board meeting after this. And number 46, approve request for motion to adjourn until May 12th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to call to order the April 28th, 2025, meeting of the Mobile County Indigent Care Board.
Number one, approve minutes of the meeting of March 4th, March 24th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept the report from the Mobile County Commission on the balance of the Indigent Care Fund as of March 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve disbursements of the Indigent Care Board cash receipts on March 24th, 2025, for the period of January 2025 through March 2025, to the entities and amounts as follows.
So moved.
Second.
And number four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a great week.
Ricky, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you, sir.
In the absence of any.